For the next.
You can feel the energy in the room. It's like this is what we need right now. I did the same thing. I left that. I even missed a form. I had a form and one for five missed. I was like, I can't leave it right now. Somebody stay right here. It was very powerful. Much needed. Yes, sir. You can feel it is more to come. Because again, I go back to the people in the right position. You can't deny it. Yeah. That's it. I thought about even down to you saying, hey, I got this going on 11 o'clock.
Trying to get a sweater or jacket because the dress she bought. She is not going to be enough. It's going to be too cold.
That can be big.
The WRL website do Zebulon Weather Cam or something like that. It'll pop right up. I always have to search for it.
Right position, man. That also is a position.
It'll get a lot of airtime when the flags up.
Welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners Budget Work Study, May 25th, 2023. Call this meeting to order. First, we need an approval of the agenda. Commissioner Louts. Second, thank you, Commissioner Clark. And all in favor? Most in passing. Budget discussion. Manager Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a recap, these work sessions, we don't are not providing formal presentations as we have in the past. This is an opportunity for the board to digest and discuss the budget among themselves. What we're looking for is feedback on the goals in the budget. Most specifically are the positions funded meeting the community's needs, are the programs funded meeting the community's needs, are the projects funded meeting the community's needs? What positions, programs, or projects need to be considered? As part of follow-up from the last work session, we had some information that we wanted to provide to you and walk you through. The first has to do with the board's interest in joining the National League of Cities. So we have modified the spreadsheet that is the governing board or governing body department budget. We've rearranged things so that your budget ordinance remains unchanged. So if you were to adopt the budget ordinance that was presented to you, it would be the same one that's been presented, but you could use the money differently. So I was going to walk you through a few of the changes. And you have a handout of this at your desk. The first one, the area that I wanted to highlight is the line item that says travel and training. The recommended budget was $20,000. We've bumped that up to $22,000. This reflects a budget per each commissioner of 1,800 and a budget for the mayor of 2,500. The 20,000 was based on 1,500 per commissioner and 2,000 per the mayor. Reason we bumped it up is you all have been very engaged in travel and training, training, going to different conferences. North Carolina League of Municipalities, all of you have gone to that the past two years. That's quite commendable. Also entering your first year of the Main Street Program, the fact that you all went to the Main Street Program, that's commendable as well. The result of that is the budget for the past two years have been exceeded. And so I bumped this up so you can all have a little bit more cushion to go to the travel and training that you've identified and gone to the past two years. I'll pause on that to see if there's any questions or comments. The next line item has to do with equipment maintenance. I'm not quite sure why we have budgeted this line item in the past. This is a line item that a functioning department, so I'll give an example since Bobby is next to me. Equipment maintenance for things like the print machine, the postage machine, that's a type of expense that this line item would cover. You all don't have that kind of equipment. You haven't spent any money out of that equipment. And so what I put before you is to zero that out and the 500 that was there would go to the materials and supplies line item to bump that up by 500. The extra 500 goes to what Commissioner Miles was talking about is the commissioners having access to swag or brand handouts, merchandise like that that they could give when they're visiting schools or civic organizations. I'll pause again to see if there's any questions or comments. Last line item that I wanted to, well, actually, I got two more that I want to highlight. Go down to, we have inserted membership for you all into the National League of Cities, so it's a little less than 900. For budgeting purposes, I'll always round up to the nearest thousand on something like that. So that's the the membership. What that does not include is if you want to go to the conference there. Unless you can fit it into the existing budget that you've got for travel and training, I did not bump that up to go to the National League of Cities. Lisa has done some research and I don't know if she's in a place where she can share with you what it would take to go to that conference, but just to give you an idea of how to budget the money that you do have. So let me just recognize if she's got some information to share with y'all.
I have reached out to Ebony with the National League of Cities and she was pulling the information that what the cost would be for the upcoming conference, but she has not gotten that back to me as of yet. So hopefully I will have it soon. She thought she would have it to me by yesterday, but I still have not gotten it.
And then the last line item to account for the membership in the National League of Cities as well as bump up for the additional travel and training, I took it out of what is the appointed board appreciation and recognition. We had put that in last year as a way to to recognize the different advisory boards that you've got. We did not do that. I'm not sure that we will do that. If we do do that, I think we can find it in the respective departments that oversee those boards, such as Parks and Recreation or Planning. If we can't, I suspect you're going to have a decent amount of rollover of unspent funds. And so if you want to capture this and put some money there, I think you'll have an opportunity come August to capture some budget rollovers. And instead of them just dumping back into the general fund, you can capture some of those and put funds towards this line item. So that was about more than the National League of Cities, but that's what started this the review of the budget that was put before you. Again, I'll pause to see if you have any questions or comments.
I just have one. I'm sorry. Could I get some clarification on the retirement line item? Because over 10,000 was requested. So do we need the 10,000 or could you help me explain why there's the recommended was 5,900?
That was based on the full year for the clerk position. So in bumping that start back to December 1st.
Can't hear you. I'm so sorry.
That was assuming it's like a July 1 start for the clerk position. And then bumping that back to December 1st, that reduced the retirement from the 10,3 to the 5,900.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? There was also a question for more detail on the expansion of the Public Works Yard. And so we've got a mock-up of the aerial photograph. This is a functional design at this point, so there's not a lot of detail, but Chris Ray, he can walk you through what the intent and if there is detail available at this time, he can certainly provide it. So I'll recognize Chris Ray.
Good evening, Mayor. Our members board. Thank you, Joe. Like we mentioned last time, we are in the middle of a master planning for the public works facility site. This is a first draft. We actually have another follow-up meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but it's a first pass at what we're looking to try to accomplish. The total site's about seven acres. We own all the way down to the railroad tracks. Currently approximately maybe 45, 50% of the site is currently being used. This is the original site layout from 1987 that Mr. Don Horton and his staff did in laying out public works. Think they did a really good job, but at this time we are starting to outgrow it with the expansion of our services and the number of pieces of equipment. So what we're looking to do is try to do this in phases and so to try to minimize the cost and do it as we need it. So the first phase is we're going is we're going to look to try to get down to there's a power line easement that's basically right here. That is between here and there is going to probably be our first phase with second phase here. Potentially, we may be able to do something, but it's very tight right there. What we want to do is we need additional lay down yard. So what we're going to do is try to clear the site, put a new SEM in here to collect the stormwater runoff to compile it our industrial permit for our site. Off-site right now, we're storing approximately seven trailers. We've got two ConXs with equipment in it. We have our bins of stone, ABC, and those type of things. So what we're looking to do is expand this maintenance yard to lay down some equipment, pipe, et cetera. One of the things we're going to try to accomplish in this first phase is to relocate a new entrance into this area here. Because right now, we don't want to ultimately, we're going to come through here and go all the way. Probably not the first phase, we'll have to move some building, electrical, cameras, and several things. So we're probably leaving it in place. We're going to come in with another entrance here and basically that lines up well with the Comfort Master across the street there. And we'll tie back over here to existing. The goal is to, like I say, put this driveway in, fencing around this whole area to match the existing fencing. Clearly, we're going to put some site lighting in there. We'll bring some water onto the site, clearing, grading. And at the end of the day, we were probably the time we have this design and permitted, we're looking around $400,000 for the very first simple phase. Grading, clearing, SEM or drainage, driveway entrance, site lighting, a little bit of power. And that's it. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Eventually, we'd love to have more lay down, have some additional storage bins, additional lay down areas. We do show on this master plan ultimately putting a garage on the site. We actually show eventually adding new salt bins or bay. To handle that, we currently store about 70 tons. We ultimately probably need to go to 50 as we keep adding 150 as we add streets, a new brine production station, and potentially like a three-sided pole barn that was north facing here, then we put some equipment and stuff under. So the first goal was make sure it all worked. We don't want to go invest in these areas. And the next thing we know is we can't afford it. So we're looking at sewer capacity of lines that are actually serving the existing facility. Can they be, will they work for the new one? Or do we got to bring in new water? Clearly, like any other project that comes in town, we got to look at the transportation improvements along here, which is a undivided roadway here that will ultimately have to be built out. We feel like that can be done in later phases since we're really not adding additional traffic to the site. So we've got a lot of little things we're looking at, but we feel comfortable at this point in time that we do have enough space to move forward. We just got to do a little more work on planning the area out. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So the green areas are delineating what exactly?
Basically, at this point right here, that's basically that's wooded area. It's just highlighting that area. There's a buffer here. Trying to keep some of this buffer that we got here. Clearly, in our budget, we'll have to do some landscaping and some screening. This piece here is a drainage line, grassy swell that's going to a SEM here that will ultimately discharge in the ditch here.
Okay. And then you've mentioned a couple of times, I've heard you say that the new I'm supposing it's both an entrance and an egress are going to be across from Comfort Masters. Is there a reason why you keep mentioning that it's going to be across the street?
Yeah, that's one of the things DOT likes to line driveway accesses up together, so you don't have them staggered. So there's when you come to here and move out, it's actually a lot safer. And we also looked at the distance for here between the curve and the speed limit. You know, when my trucks come out with a dump truck with a 40-foot trailer behind them, we're not going to be coming out as fast. And so we want to make sure we got plenty of sight distance here. Also, like I say, DOT likes driveway lined up. If you look on a lot of driveways with DOT has been done, they are lined up together for sight vision.
So the first part that would be the $400,000 portion of the project is just going up to those power lines?
Power line easement, yes, ma'am. So if you ride down the street and look back to the right, you'll be able to see that power line easement and that break. Other questions? Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Also had some questions regarding programs. I wanted to answer some of those questions that were asked. One question was travel and training for the Main Street Program Advisory Board members. That training has been included. It's been included in the travel and training within the Planning Department. So I met with Mike and confirmed that. There was a question about special event support and maybe using strategic, the Strategic Plan Grant line item to support special event. I'm still pulling together information. I can tell you this, that one of the things that we're looking at is we're looking at not only how much was waived in fees, but probably more importantly, how much did the town actually spend in supporting the event? I can tell you right now, of the $5,000 that you have in the Strategic Plan Grants, that will not cover the amount of fees that you waived, certainly not the amount of cost. Right now, I think in the rough totals that we're looking at, we're at least $15,000 in staff support for events that we have supported. So that is both an update on the special event support and also a recommendation that allow us some more time. Don't budget any funds for this. Allow us to pull together some information and give you some recommendations in the new fiscal year. Again, much like I said, with the board appreciation, if you want to capture some unspent funds, then this would be an opportunity to do that. But I'd like to be able to tell you how much funds you need to capture. Again, the amount that you have in the Strategic Plan Grants will not cover the amount of the fees that were waived, certainly not the amount of staff and equipment support for those events. So I'll pause on special event support to see if there's any questions or comments.
How long do you expect it will take to pull that information together?
As far as pulling the information together, I bet we could have information for you at your June meeting. What I'm trying to underline to you, however, is that I don't think you necessarily need to press for this for a decision. The reason I say that is I think this might be a better conversation. Obviously, it's up to y'all, but it might be a better conversation in August for two reasons. One reason is you'll have a better, we'll have a better idea to tell you how much rollover funds we've got. Okay? So by next week, I can tell you how much we have spent, but I can't really tell you how much funds we have available to support it. So that's why I would recommend waiting. Certainly, we'll get you the information on how much we spent as soon as we've got it. The second reason I would recommend waiting is the special events, they are supposed to come to you on a quarterly basis. And so I think you've got some time before the next big event comes. So that's a lot of rambling to tell you that we can get you the information on how much we have waived. We can get you the information on how much we spent in staff and equipment support. We will not be able to tell you how much we've got in rollover funds by next week.
So are we moving forward then, or are you recommending that we move forward with the $5,000 that we have there currently, knowing that we're going to recapture some funds and we'll have a better idea of how much in August?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
Did we also get some estimates? Some of the staff time, I'm assuming is a sunk cost. In other words, they're already being paid, or are we incurring comp time or overtime?
Yeah, we'll clarify what that is. But we won't double count. Any other questions on the special event support? Strategic Plan Grants, I wanted to share with you because I need to give some clarification. Commissioner Harrison asked a question if we have a request come before you and you are on the board of that nonprofit. I provided an answer to her that said you would need to resign from that board. And taking a closer look at the general statute, the general statute does allow the board member, if they are on a nonprofit board, to recuse themselves. So you do have that option. Just as a reminder to the board, recusal is a board action. So if you're ever in a situation where you need to recuse yourself, you have to request that of the board and the board votes on your recusal. But that is an option. So you don't necessarily have to resign from being on a board or participating on a nonprofit. On the Strategic Plan Grants itself, because this is a budget discussion, my recommendation is just keep the 5,000. You have a policy on Strategic Plan Grants. Because of the change in the general statute, it needs to be written, rewritten. And so this would, I think, be a good conversation for potentially something like an August work session where you get a policy and you can adopt that. Again, at that time, if you think the 5,000 is sufficient, then you've already got it budgeted. Also, because you're looking at August and we'll have a better sense of how much rollover, if you want to augment that, that will be a good time for you to do that. So again, our recommendation is you got 5,000 in Strategic Plan Grants, just keep it there. You need a revised policy and you'll need to get a sense of if you want to augment that line item, both of which August would be a really good timeframe for you to consider.
And as far as you know, for this fiscal year, we haven't used anything from the Strategic Plans Grant line, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the Strategic Plan Grants? Last question, it's follow-up and you have this as a handout. You have both Impact Fee Analysis and the Capital Improvement Plan for Parks and Recreation. So that was a question that was asked. And so this is, the information is provided to you at your desk. If there's any questions, Sheila Long is here. So we'll take, if you have any questions now, but this was really more just a response to a question that you had and give you time to review those documents.
Can she show me where exactly it says like it has to be a certain vicinity where the park, you can only spend those funds? I kind of glanced it online. I didn't see it exactly, but can I break it down to you? Where is that going to find that?
Mike, I might, you know, need to help me a little bit. So the you have to be able to specifically tie it to the development. And it has to be reasonable that the amenity or the park that you are developing is in response to growth from that development. So that is written in your charter, which is state statute.
So it's not in here? Because I looked for it. I recently read it and I was looking for it over the weekend. I didn't see it exactly where it said it had to be like the vicinity thing. I just want to get a understanding because I had some citizens ask that and I was trying to explain it that when we read it together, didn't see it in there.
So I'd be happy to go through through the plan with you. But the the Impact Fee Study, it looks at your legal nexus to be able to charge it. And then it looks at the different types of levels of service because it's all tied to growth. And so there are different ways to calculate your level of service. And so it looks at the level of service that the community had at the time that the study was done. And then it calculates what you're going to need, like moving forward, what the cost of additional parkland, what the cost of additional recreation facilities is going to cost, what's the cost of the additional ball field. It looks at all of that and then it gives you a calculation on how that breaks down to the expected growth and what the cost per citizen is. And so that's where the calculation occurs. But again, the whole document and the state statute that the update to your charter ties everything to growth based on development. And so if you were, and it also has to, your charter also ties it specifically to having a plan to implement it. So you can't just, it can't just be, I'm going to charge this fee for for growth and I have this this study. It has to be based on a plan and you have to have a plan to implement it. And that is what you're a plan to implement it. And that is what your Parks and Rec Master Plan is. And so what is the additional park space and the additional facilities are noted in your Parks and Rec Master Plan that was adopted by the board?
Commissioner Miles, if you take a look at page two of that report, Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study, and I'm referring to this section that says General Legal Framework. About midway down, you'll start to see words like roughly proportional, rational nexus, reasonable relationship. Yeah, roughly proportional. Those are the legal arguments based on getting to the question that you're talking about. That's, I have just expended my legal knowledge, so probably a conversation with Eric Vernon is in. But that's, that's getting at what I think your question is.
I mean, I understand, like, the implementation of the, the fee, impact fees. I was just saying, like, where funds can only be used in certain areas. Like I said, I didn't really see that. But it sounds as if it's in our charter. Could we get a copy of that where it's showing that, so I can get a better understanding of that? Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So Sheila, I'm going to run a scenario by you just to try and make sure that I, that I have an understanding. So say a development comes in and they're not going to offer a pool, but we have a pool on our Parks and Rec Master Plan, even though it's not, say, adjacent, it's within the town limits, and the increase in the population would, since they don't have a pool, would be driving people to that location to utilize a pool. Would that still be, like, with, with how you understand this to work, be considered reasonable?
Yes. So based on the size of our community, we're not like the city of Raleigh, so where if they only had one pool, but you have to drive 20 minutes to get to it. So there's a little bit of a difference in that perspective. In our community, based on our current size, if we were to build a pool, it would be, it would fall under a community amenity. Like, it would be built, intended to serve the entire population. Because by national standards, when you hit 20,000, that's when you're looking to build a pool. And you would be more likely to be, be closer to being able to sustain it. And so our population size, we could reasonably justify why you would use some of the funds, not all of them, but some of the funds, because your current residents would use that as well. And so you, you would want it to be fairly distributed. And so yes, a pool, you could, because that, by national standards and based on our population size, it would be realistic that they would be using that, that resource.
Okay. And then to go one step further, say you've got three communities, and let's just draw a triangle in our mind, A, B, and C, and we're putting the pool in the middle of that triangle, we would be taking roughly four different, we'd be using four different pots of money. Money from the town itself, because we know that the current residents are going to be utilizing it, and then monies from A, B, and C, not the entire, but a proportion of it, to be able to do the build out?
Yeah, essentially, that's how it would work.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one thing to note, there, there are certain amenities you want to be careful that you're not, one, because you don't want to jeopardize it, but two, you have to keep in mind all of that, like, that master plan at large. And the, I think the pool is a great example. If you ever want to build that, it's going to be extremely expensive. And so letting this impact fee revenue build is going to allow you to build the four additional neighborhood parks. It's going to allow you to expand community park. It's going to allow you to build that recreation center. It's going to allow you to build that pool in the future. So those are all things that are identified in your plan, in that none of those things are going to be cheap.
I have one more question that I, I'm sure that I was told the answer at some point, but I'm just not able to reach back in my mind that far right now. When we got the dollar amount for the master plan, did that include, you know, projections into future costs, or that was what it would cost to build right, right now?
So there's not a good way to, I mean, you can estimate, it's based on what the estimates were then. But because of when we did our master plan, we were seeing the inflation rising, and so we actually anticipated some increases in cost. And so we, we feel like we got a good snapshot, but it is standard practice in, not just in Parks and Rec, but in, I mean, Public Works probably does this as well. But you have to take into consideration how inflation has impacted and the, the costs that are increasing every year. So if we knew a project was, you know, $1,000 this year, more than likely, the inflation standard, you're going to see it, I'm just going to pull a number out of my head, it would be 1,200 this year, and then next year it would be 1,400. I mean, we can make, you make those assumptions as you budget. And that's why you revisit your CIP every year.
And so while we know that it costs this much today, and that it'll be probably this much next year, we also have to take into consideration that we're probably not going to be addressing, and I'm just using a pool for no other reason than that was the word that I chose. The pool's going to be built out after, once we hit 20,000 people, which we can try to project that, but we don't really know. And so there, there's this level of uncertainty. So we know the cost of what it, what the master plan was when you, when you first adopted it. And I'm assuming that the impact fees are probably not going to be sufficient to do the projects that we need to have done to accomplish our goals.
Yeah. So much like with planning, Parks and Rec is in the same way. So while your plan was a 10-year plan, it's really good, it depends on, on your growth and how your ability to implement projects. And so you should, while the plan is good for 10 years, you should be updating it every five. With us having the amount of growth, we may want to consider doing it a little bit sooner, but that's something we just have to communicate on if we feel that plan we have is still reflecting our needs, or if there have been significant changes. So yeah, I think the, the impact fee has to be revisited around the same timeframe. So we did, Zebulon did something very unique. It's not common, but it is great practice for you to do your impact fee and your master plan at the same time. It's very important that Zebulon do it that way because of the way our charter's written.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Yes.
Question first, and a comment. Little River, excuse me, Whitley Park, with the new swimming pool property we've got, what are your thoughts and timetables on developing that additional land we have right adjacent to it?
So I think first, we need to finish the reclaiming and all of that. We need to enter into a site plan project for that park. I have my thoughts on what I think would be best uses of that space, and there could be a variety of them. Naturally, a lot of people think that net sports, like focusing your pickleball and your tennis there. I have some concerns that sound could be an issue for the neighbors that live immediately in there, because pickleball is very loud. And once you build pickleball courts, they will be used heavily. And you're starting to see where communities that put pickleball courts in a setting like Whitley Park are having to start to limit the hours that the court's being used. So while that was originally thought to be a great place for that, based on current trends in the industry, I would think that while we do a site plan, we need to really look at that and see if there's another place that would be better for that. And maybe you expand tennis, or maybe you do some other things. But I think we need to work with the community to understand what their desires are specifically for that park.
So I just want to make sure that it keeps moving along. And then we also have that large green space directly off Wakefield that currently I think is pretty much just used for parking, but some thoughts like fence it and the dog park, et cetera.
Yeah, that's definitely something that you could consider. Again, I think we need to work with the community to understand what the affected neighbors are going to want out of a facility like that, where, what, just the community at large, what they're looking for out of that specific park. I think those are definitely things to consider.
And then the comment is just a recommendation. This Park and Rec's budget, project cost on here is like $56 million total.
Oh, yeah.
It's becoming a huge project. And I would ask you to maybe spend some time with your Parks and Rec board, letting them see how large this project is that they're advising on. I think sometimes they just think about the park system and don't really realize how big this is becoming and how important it is.
Yeah. No, I, I think that they absolutely understand and they really are behind the project. They've even, they looked at that CIP and even recommended that the board adopted it before it came to you. They've spent time looking at it, that if you went to a park bond, what were the projects that they think that would be good candidates for a park bond? So they've spent some time in it. I think the big thing is, we know that's a big price tag and we know it's, we can't achieve everything. That is very common in a master plan. That's why you look at it every year and you really have to understand what are our priorities this year? What does our revenue look like? What can we achieve? What do we want to achieve? A park bond, a lot of those projects in that master plan, and it's in the master plan this way. In order for a significant amount of those projects to happen, you have to have a park bond. But if the, the community, the, the town will need to be able to afford that, and the community will need to be able to afford that and support it. Park bonds do typically go very well in a community because they're reflecting projects that the community has said they want. But it's, it's going to take that to make that 56,000 happen.
Thank you.
Space near the park that's basically used for parking, I'm not sure, but I, I thought that, that space was donated to be used for a specific purpose?
No, the town, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say 100% positive. I'm going to say 85% positive that the town purchased that property.
Okay.
I can go back and pull the records. I'd be happy to do that. But I'm pretty sure, because I, I recall some history about that site that, Beverly's shaking her head. So we purchased that, correct? I think there was an expectation when we bought it that we would keep it an open space, but I'm, I don't, I remember going back and looking. It's been a while, but I don't believe that there is anything tied to our deed to keep it open space.
A conversation with Mayor Matheny, it was purchased from Parish Realty years ago, and a lot of ideas were brought forward on what to use it for. And because there were a lot of ideas, that's why it's still an open space.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, when you go to do your site plan, we would look at all of that. We would look at any, the, the background, if there were any deeds, any title restrictions, we would look at that type of thing. So if there was restriction on it from a donation or being required to remain just open space, those are definitely things we would look at.
Just clarification.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any other questions or comments?
When we revise these master plans for recreation, is it a consideration to also change the impact fees?
Yeah. So you would want, our community, again, based on our charter and based on our growth, we would absolutely want to revisit the impact fee at the same time we revisit our master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And some questions from last week regarding personnel. So a question came up about a legal services contract. Eric has sent on a contract, and I've placed a version of that for you all to look at. That's not necessarily a budget discussion, but it is something available for you to look at. And if you want to have a conversation about the scope of services, we can certainly have that. But again, this was a request. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Eric is available to provide any sort of answers. I recognize that you all are just seeing this, so you might have some follow-up, and I'm sure he'll be available to answer questions through email. A question was also asked about the standard procedure for the cell phone reimbursement. So again, we've provided a copy of that available to you. Again, we recognize that this, you're just now seeing this, but if there are any questions that jump to top of mind, we're more than happy to answer those.
Now, one question I have is, how did you derive the $35 and $50 monthly reimbursement rate when some research I've done showed that you can get plans for around $25 a month? I was just curious how that came about. And those plans continue to go down as things become more competitive.
Sure. So the cell phone reimbursement standard procedure was developed a few years ago. And as with any technology, things improve over time. So I'd be more than happy to take a look at the research that you've come up with. If we need to revise that to reflect more current market trends, then we'll be happy to take a look at that. As far as what was the rationale at the time, that was a few years ago. I don't know that. Are there any other questions or comments on the cell phone reimbursement?
So where do you get that information to Joe for him to look at?
I can print it off. I just went on the internet and looked at T-Mobile, Verizon, and looked at some of the plans they offer, as well as watching TV and seeing the specials they're putting out there. And it's drastically come down.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a look at that. And then the market study, the question came up, I believe it was from Commissioner Miles, about salaries. And much as you all did when you evaluated your compensation, we gave you comparisons. So I've asked Lisa to go ahead and start doing some research and how salaries compare to the market in our labor shed, as well as pull together information on how different municipalities, especially those around us, pursue market studies. Some of them do studies in-house, some of them bring on consultants, some of them do a hybrid approach. The things that we've come to find out is the comparison of salaries when it comes to fire and police, as an example, is pretty straightforward. A, a police officer or firefighter, as far as duties, pretty universal from organization to organization. Things get a little bit more difficult when you start evaluating salaries in Parks and Recreation and Public Works. What is the title of a position in an organization for Public Works or Parks and Rec Department can be a different set of responsibilities for the same title position. So that's why a lot of organizations use market studies is get down to the bottom of comparing apples with apples. So that's just really just a response back to a question that was raised, that we're starting to pull together some information on the market, as well as how to do market studies. Again, I'll take any questions or comments that the board has.
Is, so it has that, is that in the information that was given to us?
No, that's just a heads up, that, just to recognize that a question came up, and so we're providing response. That's all. And that marks our responses, just as far, unless there's other board questions or comments. As far as the next steps, budget public hearing is scheduled for June 5. Per general statute, you'll be in a position, if you feel as though you're ready, to adopt the budget on that same night. So we'll give you that opportunity. The only other provision that you've got per statute is that you need to adopt a budget ordinance before July 1. You have a work session scheduled on June 15, so you do have the option on June 5, if you want to table a decision on the budget to June 15. Again, that, that's our responses to the questions that came up last week. We're available to answer any other questions that the board may have.
This is just the CIP for Parks and Rec?
It is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Yes. I think at one point, Sheila, you said that you would find out some numbers for putting one of those water fountain stations downtown that had the, the pressure nozzle that you have, that you have to turn for it to be on, and then when you release it, it turns off for like the dog water filling station and a water bottle filling station. Is that anywhere reflected in the CIP?
That was incorporated into the alley activation project-
Okay.
-with HUD funding. And so I have, now that we have an economic developer and that oversees the Main Street effort as well, I have turned that project over to the downtown, the economic development, downtown development. And so I'm, I will make sure, I know that they're going back through the project to get it ready for contract with HUD, and so that there were, we have the opportunity to make some changes because there were some property that we purchased. And so there, there's some things that they're working through now to update that effort, and I will touch base with them and just make sure that that's still in there.
Cause I would like to see some movement as we, on that, as we see more people, especially downtown during the day when it's super hot and walking their animals. And then, oh my gosh, my other question.
It also helped with watering the plants.
Oh, yeah, for wa, yeah, it'll help for watering the plants and stuff as well. But I had one more question for you.
Was it about power sources for the food trucks?
Oh, it was, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Miles. You've indicated that there are three power supplies downtown that would accommodate food trucks on Arrendale, correct?
There's four on Arrendale.
Four on Arrendale, and then how many, and then there's more on Horton, right?
We've got, yeah, we've got one station on Horton Street that can support two. And we've got one at the back of the alley by Creative Cup as well.
So we've got eight, or seven?
There's-
Wait, four? Another one that can handle two?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so seven trucks total?
Um, yes, depending on where, where your event is and how you're placing it, but yeah, we have, we can support. The one at the back of Creative Cup, we added that just to give us something closer to that public lot, like if we were doing something over there, but you've gotta be cognizant of how far you're gonna run the power to. So chances are, if you're doing an, an event on Arrendale, you're not gonna run the power necessarily all the way from the back of that alley to Arrendale.
Right.
But you could, if you were doing an event that called, like a, something smaller, like the farmer's market that we did where we had a food truck, we would be able to support a food truck at that public lot.
Okay, so, just reflecting upon Spring Fest, which I think that definitely we've made some forward progress with, with how we deal with events of that size. One of the areas that I think that we still have an opportunity is in making sure that we can have more of those vehicles plugged in. And I didn't see that as part of the CIP because, and we talked about how expensive it was to have that turned, turned over. But you're saying the, the water fountain is part of the alley activation. Do we have any more of those electrical installations in the alley activation portion that we are exploring with HUD funds?
Yes, so we, we included just general infrastructure as a part of the project and in the alley activation effort. We have met with Shannon and Teresa and, you know, we expressed like what the original intent of the effort is, but we also are talking about ways that, they're, they're looking at things very holistically, like they've met with the police department, they met with public works, they're, they're looking at, okay, what is it that your department has needed or needs in your operations when we do events? What are things that you've seen? I know they've had some other conversations as well, and so some, I'm gonna give the example of a light pole. If we want, the, the project also included wifi down there originally, and so if we want additional lighting, are we able to look at these efforts when we go in and we add wifi? If we're adding lighting, we're adding, is that a spot we can have some wifi, or is that a spot we can also add a camera? So is that a spot we can also, if we're already doing all of that, add a hookup for a food truck? So we're trying to look at the holistic needs of downtown, just from an operational standpoint, and then seeing how can we combine those efforts to maximize the impact on our citizens in our downtown. So we are absolutely looking at how that can all work together.
Cause I know that certainly being able to plug those trucks in kinda ticks two of our boxes as far as like vibrant downtown and small town life, because when you're downtown and everything is super loud and you're getting all the smell from the diesel when they're running their generators, it's more like you're at a street fest in downtown Raleigh where you feel like you're gonna pass out from the fumes and you can't even talk to someone next to you. So I would, I would love us to be moving forward in a way that, you know, accommodates the fact that, yeah, we're gonna be seeing more food trucks. I mean, that just seems to be how festivals operate anymore.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're really excited for the investment that the board has, you know, offered us to support our downtown events. I believe, no, I wasn't prepared for this question, but I believe we had 12 food trucks at Spring Fest-
Yeah, through a lot.
-and all but three were, had a source to be able to plug into, off the top of my head. So that was really exciting, that we were able to at least do that much. We do try to take note of ones that are extremely loud and place them accordingly, but we, we also just try to make sure that we're, we're fair in how that's offered.
Of course. So there is nothing specifically in the budget to address that, but we might be doing maybe a budget adjustment as we move through FY '24 to try and take that into consideration?
I would absolutely recommend navigating the HUD funding in that effort because there's, there could be some combined efficiencies and economies of scale that I think would be important to, to navigate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so very much, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Yeah. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, well, I've got you here. I've got about 50 pink notes on my budget, but they're not quite all questions. Start off with on page B14, which is the overview of the Park and Rec's budget for the year. Things caught my attention. One is that we're paying $54,000 in park maintenance, which I'm assuming is mowing, or la, excuse me, park landscaping. It's at the bottom of the ledger sheet. And then we also have cemetery landscaping. Those two together have risen to $81,000 a year, which to me tickles my knowledge on why we're not hiring a person to do that, cause, for example, the cemetery has not grown, yet the budget's almost doubled, and since more people are buried there and the lots are pretty much all sold out, it should require a whole lot less mowing. Has doubled since '21, or excuse me, yeah, '21.
Twenty-one.
Um, well, the budget has not, I'm not sure, hang on, just one second.
What line, what line are you at? Where is that?
On-
It's B14.
B14, budget sheet.
That's a partial year. So the cemetery was formally maintained by Public Works, and there, so, no, contract is not a long-term answer to this, but the cost for us right now, the cost for us on some of these efforts, if we were to hire the staff and buy all of the equipment that goes along with it, it would actually cost the town more. There will be, as we expand our levels of service and expand, like as we develop Little River Park, we are going to absolutely need to transition some of this from contract to staffing. The cemetery would be one, that's a, that's a lot of weed eating. It's not just about just mowing it, it's a lot of work for that.
There's trees, limbs, I mean, I understand there's vegetation, it's more than grass.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a three-man crew for a day, day and a half, if I recall correctly, Chris, is that right?
Yeah.
And then, um, that's all of, that they're doing in that, just to hit, not hit, but just to meet the, the just regular routine maintenance of that site.
Is that per month?
That's every other week.
Oh, every other week.
Mm-hmm. At, just at the cemetery. Our other parks, so we, when we transitioned to this landscape, again, some of the parks when I got here were maintained by Public Works, but they've had such a huge expanse in their responsibilities and stormwater, additional streets and all of that. And as we were moving forward with our master plan and we did our operational assessment, we had parks that weren't being maintained to the same level because they're being maintained by two different departments that were separate and apart with two different, you know, ultimate goals at the end of the day. We are gonna be very park and user focused in, in our maintenance. And so we were able to pull this in and manage it a little bit better. We do want to start to pull off of those contracts some because we're gonna need the additional staff, but we need to do it in a very intentional effort so that we don't impact our citizens at the end of the day, because by operating this way, we have increased our level of service to our citizens.
Just wanna keep a close tab on that, and then also, if we take it over, when we landscape it, to try to make it somewhat maintenance-free with the use of mulch and plants that don't require as much trimming, et cetera, much like we do in our own yards at home.
Oh, yeah, I'm, you don't want my opinion on bushes. I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Uh, no, I do think, I agree, but I wanna, I wanna be very clear, that double that you see is not a double. That is the transition of the cemeteries from public works to parks maintenance, from it being done by staff versus being done by contract happened mid-year, so it was not a full year expenditure.
Okay.
You're up here?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Under the athletics, it says that we've, I mean, like we've increased, not quite double. What, what is captured there to account for the big difference? Is that like the increase in soccer, or what is that?
Um, that's increases across the board. You're officiating, like if you have more players, you have more teams, you have more games, you have more costs all across the board. So a lot of that are your, your official cost. There's also an increase in, I believe, use of the middle school, cause as our teams continue to grow and we have to continue, that, that's a significant increase in cost in being able to rent that middle school gym to support our growing program. Um, let's see, there's sanction fees in there, so when we do tournaments, and that's another thing, we've added a component of tournaments to our seasons to give the kids just a fun way to end their seasons. We've paid sanctions, so some of our teams will play in the state or the regional tournaments, and so we have to pay for that. So we've, those fees are calculated in there. When we provide supplies to coaches, that's in the athletics line. First aid kit, I mean, there's a lot of that, just general supplies and equipment for athletics. I believe the athletics line also included some improvements to the ball fields at Community Park to give us some more flexibility. I'm gonna give the example, ZES, that lower field, just a sprinkle will make that field completely unplayable for days without a lot of work from staff. And we just don't have the capacity to focus on one field to make it dry and playable. We also want to, just to kind of, to Commissioner Louts' point, being able to provide a concessions atmosphere, we need to be able to concentrate our games in one area. So we are looking at removing our, some of our permanent mounds so that we can have temporary mounds and create flexibility in how we're using those fields, then that would also create some flexibility in us being able to rent it for people that wanna have tournaments. It also includes, if you've ever, there's no foul poles at Community Park, and so we would like to install those, that's in that budget.
So that's, okay.
Yes.
Cause that wasn't, that was under op, that's, it was under the operating budget, which is why I had a question, because it wasn't under a capital improvement, and I would think that like foul poles would be a capital improvement, but-
Not necessarily the, the cost, it, it's just that there's a lot of smaller item, ticket items that are just all at one time, but they really are a little bit more operational. You could put it under CIP if you wanted to, but the, these are things that you're gonna have to address. I mean, once you've bought a temporary mound, you know, they're gonna have a lifespan, you're gonna wanna replace it, so it, it could fall in either category.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to have an understanding of why they increase.
Those are great questions.
I'm sorry, Larry, I know that you had some other questions.
And these are, these comments or questions are kinda directed to the board as well as staff. I would like to see us include a employee wellness survey budgeted in the budget for around $5,000 that the UN School of Government can do for us. At the Triangle J Zoom call last night, they have done some extensive surveying of elected officials and town staff, but they really suggest it's a good idea for the town to do a, a survey of their own employees, of how the board's doing, how staff's doing, just how we're doing, especially as fast as we're growing. Another item is seriously consider some type of an LED information board. Ideally, a town should have four of those with northeast, west, south, you know, entrance and exits from town, and the ideal place to put the first one, if we can get it in the budget, would be in front of Town Hall. They can be updated by wifi, very easy to do. We have a communications person soon coming on staff. Commissioner Baxter?
And we've talked about this before in years, in years prior, and I absolutely agree with you that we do need something like that. We brought those signs that the police department had on board to do a little bit of public communications about festivals and about closures, and I think that they've worked really, really well. I've had a lot of positive feedback, and so I think that you're right, we need to investigate what that's going to cost us to do a more permanent, nicer-looking sign so that it doesn't do like half of one word and then it switches and then it does the other half of the word, just because of how limited those signs are. They're great, but I, I agree.
Most of these are, you can actually almost purchase them off the shelf. The only thing you have to do is how fancy you wanna make it, and then branding or the logo, which we're still waiting on. Another item, we talked about the PEG, $54,000 expense, better use the public television for some ads, and along with that, we have several expired people on our citizen advisory boards that we need to consider getting people to apply for, whether or not we're gonna reappoint people. And this comes to mind, cause Wendell just put out a beautiful video on all of their advisory board committees encouraging citizens to investigate and apply so they can get more involved, and I think we're kinda missing out on that.
So Larry, what you're saying is we could be using our partnership with PEG Media to create something similar to what Wendell did?
Right.
Is that going to have an additional cost associated with it? And I'm asking staff that, I mean, I'm assuming it would be a little bit of time to kind of write the script and whatnot, but-
Yeah, and we need to remind PEG, when they do this for a town, offer to do it to the other towns, cause a lot of it's already done. You know, the script, the layout, I mean, it'd be very easy for me to replicate. Joe?
To answer Commissioner Baxter, we could always ask. We don't know what the response is gonna be, but I, my experience, and I've said this in the email that I sent earlier, they have expressed a willingness to try anything and a capability to do it. Their issue traditionally has been capacity, and so- and a capability to do it. Their issue traditionally has been capacity, and so we just gotta, just gotta have a conversation and get a sense of, does this request generate that kind of a workload, and can they absorb it? Or does, do we need to have a conversation that something else goes? And then Commissioner Louts loved the idea about offering the service to other towns with seven different partners. Each town is just in a different place on how they want to communicate, but certainly if, uh, doing it for one, there's, there's no harm in offering it to others, just to make them aware of it.
I guess I'll continue down my list until I get stopped here.
Hang on, before you go, did you, or have more parts and rates, specific ones?
No, no, I'm, I'm finished. You can have a seat.
I don't mind standing, but I didn't want to assume. Thank you.
This is just a, a Budget Guy question. Do we reimburse employees for local travel in town?
Personal vehicles?
Yeah.
Some, yes.
Okay, I bring that up because...
If there's no, if there's no departmental vehicle in service, yeah, probably, possibly.
I, I bring that up because at N C State University, we beat this around the bush, and to reimburse employees for local travel of a couple miles, your administrative costs far exceed the amount of the reimbursement to the employee. So in most cases, the university had told university employees, you can either walk or use a university vehicle, otherwise you're not gonna get reimbursed, and I really couldn't tell how we were handling that by looking just at the budget ledgers.
Yeah.
Give them some examples of what...
I would say typically not, like, I go to the cemetery, I've been 25 years on my personal vehicle, never requested reimbursement. It's not worth the trouble. Uh, typically, it'd be a longer, like, Knightdale, Raleigh, wherever. Or somebody, they wouldn't do a two or three mile reimbursement.
Just curious about that. Um, next thing on my list, as you know, with the federal deficit and whether or not they're gonna raise the lending limit, et cetera, any updates on the COVID funding? And if we're potentially at risk of losing any that we've not spent, not knowing what's gonna happen in Washington, D.C.?
No, not, not that I've heard any legit risk of losing it. Um, we're investigating. I plan to maybe head off the possibility, but no.
Because the, what's, what's the exposure? Any idea of what is not, not spent as of right now that we potentially could lose?
Well, we, you mean, as far as what we received? Uh, we received about um, one, just about 1.9 million.
1.9?
1.9.
And of that, how much have we actually expended?
None.
None of it?
Right.
So...
We have that slated to be spent, though, and if we've made the commitment of an area of which it's going to be spent, we just have to, according to the rules that were handed down, make sure that we spend it by the um...
It's gotta be obligated by the end of 2024.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Obligated, okay, all right.
Now, are we talking about COVID or are we talking about uh A R P?
Actually, both.
Okay.
Because they, what they're talking about is pulling back any unspent money to help the deficit.
So we have, the, the 1.9 you mentioned, is, is that both or is that...
That's A R P.
That's A R P.
COVID money, I mean, the C, uh, COVID, it's C S L R F, basically the same thing, A R P money. That's the 1.9.
Okay, I, I thought we had dedicated that for stormwater?
Yes.
Yes. I have more, but does somebody else want to?
Go right ahead, keep going.
Want to keep going down my list? Some comments on new positions, um, and this is just based upon my work experience. The, I don't know if we're ready for an I T director at this point in time. I'd like to see us have the I T support position filled with somebody who's got certifications when they get hired, and number two, some experience in planning uh the use and deployment of technology. I don't know if we need, I don't know if we need two I T people right now. You do need one badly, and you're also in a situation, you need somebody who's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and those are hard to find. But we have an excellent contractor or supporter, I think, with Network Solutions, who's Network South is who we're using.
Yeah, so Lisa might want to chime in. So let me, um, I'm gonna offer a suggestion. First, Network South is um being warmly welcomed by staff. They're very, um, very appreciative. Get a lot of positive comments from them. They're also very expensive. And um, one of the reasons that um we put in the I T director is the specialist position uh was good at fixing broken stuff, and when the next thing broke, they fixed that, and when the next thing broke, they fixed that. But we were, so we were kind of on the hamster wheel. We didn't have anyone looking um long-term about what our needs were. And so the suggestion I've got for the board to consider is um fund the I T director. Bring the I T director on board. Give them the opportunity to assess what the needs are, and then they can come give you a report, and at least we've got the funding for a I T specialist, and we can have a conversation about if we move forward with that. I suspect that the funds that, if we do move forward, won't be the amount of funds that we're spending on the position that we've got right now. So that's, that's my suggestion. I'll even be forward enough to say recommendation. Fund the I T director, bring that director on, give them an opportunity to do an assessment of where we are and the workload capacity, and see if you even need to fill that other position that's funded, but that's for y'all to decide.
So do we have a job description for those already, those positions already?
For the I T director, we do not.
But I'm trying to figure out that we can, Olivia, I think the last position that we had, we brought the gentleman on, we paid for him to be educated, and then he left us. So we kind of made, kind of gave him something. We didn't, I don't believe we got our full monies worth, to my understanding.
Yeah, I was gonna just make the suggestion that when we go through this hiring process, I know that sometimes we're working in a tight market and we don't have a vast number of applicants, but um I would really love for us to try our hardest to hire people that are certified to the level that we need them to be so that we don't have to send them for additional trainings just to get them up to speed. Because you're, you're right, I feel like we offered a bunch of training and, and now that training has gone somewhere else instead of, you know, I'd rather pay a little bit more knowing that that person is um fully certified and has the training that they need.
We believe the budget, the, the funding that's in, the funding that's budgeted for the position will fulfill that. This is a higher-end position.
For, for both of them, yeah? The H R tech and the H R, or H R?
I T.
I T tech and the I T director?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's kind of hard for me to, to visualize hiring a person in a, in a, in a, in a position where they're the only ones that know what they're doing, you know? A director, at least if someone's working with them, they have some idea of what they're doing, and because the, when they report to us or whatever, how do we know? We don't know, you know, because we're not, that's not our expertise field.
My org chart comment to that would be, and this is, I'm just visualizing this, that the new assistant town manager could in fact be the supervisor over I T, and if we hire the right assistant town manager, they should have some understanding of the technology, especially if they came from another town to help us do this, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but if you look at the page before B-10 in your budget, this just jumped out at me because I used to have to do this all the time. If you look at that summary page over administration, there were 4,533 work orders completed, and I actually thought that was a small number for the size of this town, but we would review those work orders in detail to try to figure out if we had an equipment problem, a person problem, et cetera, and we jokingly used to say many times, the problem is between the chair and the keyboard. In other words, it's the operator. That's when you need to do more training, because technology's fuzz for everybody. By the time you get used to software, they upgrade it and change it, and you're fuzzy again, you know, trying to get good. And, but I did, I did show in that summary that you did 852 hours of training, which I thought was great. I don't know who got trained, but that's a lot of training hours.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, that I T took up some of that, but where did the rest of that go? Because that's all under information technology.
I applaud you for even tracking this, because a lot of organizations don't even keep up with the work orders or the requests, let alone the training hours, so I applaud you for tracking that. But that I T supervisor, director, whatever, really needs to get in the weeds on this because you want to be driving the work orders down, and ideally, the training goes up.
That's the intent, is having someone just watch over that. We, I hate to use this as a analogy, but we were very much on the hamster wheel on this. We're just jumping from problem to problem, and we're not assessing what is the problem. Is it a user problem? Is it a network problem? We don't have anyone really minding the store because we don't have anyone in, on staff with that level of expertise. So that was the intention, the rationale behind the request for the I T director.
And having one I T person, they're getting pulled by every department at the same time. I'm, I understand the, the demand put on Ron when he was here.
And that, that's the reason that we put in the budget an I T director and keep the budgeting for the position that Ron held as well. But we're more than happy to, to, I would not fill Ron's position in advance of getting an I T director. I would want to bring on an I T director to come in and assess the landscape, give all of us a sense of what's going on before we hire anyone else.
So in the meantime, we'll still, we'll have that director still be paying Network South?
Yeah. Yeah.
What is the cost of Network South? Can I give me, can I break, if you could break that down for me a little bit, please?
Do you have any information you share about what we're paying Network South?
Um, for them to come in and do the workstations, it's um roughly uh $6,800 a month before taxes, and that doesn't um count for the other things that we already contract with them to do.
So now, with that said, okay, I would see Ron quite a bit over at the, at the police station. How, how are they getting their support? Is Network South supporting our police station as well?
They're supporting everybody.
Okay, thank you.
I have a B-10 question that, um, Chris Bissett's not here, but Wayne is. So could you just explain a little bit of what the safety um committee line item is? Chris has explained it to me in the past, but just so that the rest of the board understands what that funds.
Can you answer that? Can you answer that? Do you know enough about it?
I'm assuming that's physics.
Yeah. Do you know enough about it?
Well, I got the job.
All right, give it to her.
All right, we got this.
Got a little bit because I wasn't expecting a question like that. But uh, as I think most of you know, Chris Bissett is the town safety officer. So for that budget, um, certainly, um, he provides uh safety information to the town. He, I know we have done, of course, COVID, um, we had, he bought a lot of secondhand sanitizer and things like that. But that, that's what it's used for.
That also includes training, though, right?
Yes, he does, he does do, you know, he goes, uh, if he finds an opportunity um to find out more information. We've had a safety uh officer for a while, but no one that really did the job as they should. It was just so much other things that the guys had that was, that was in that position. Um, they just didn't have the time. And so uh, he's done a much better job. He's tried to learn more about what his role is, um, what he needs to do in that role. So yes, he, he, he's not only getting training, but he's also trying to provide training for, for town employees, yes.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Was that, was that good enough?
Is that what you needed?
And if they're happy, we're happy. With that was another discussion, and I don't know if you can handle this, or maybe Bobby, but many times in the newspaper you'll see in a town where a town employee is involved in an auto accident, and you cannot sue a town employee. They're protected under government immunity. So many times, the party that's been harmed by the town employee, their insurance has to pay to fix the vehicle, and you end up having a P R disaster. I wonder if we have any insurance that covers those minor infractions where, you know, I think the recent one I thought, I think I saw was in Wake Forest where a dump truck or something backed into a citizen's car, and it was pretty much, well, it's on you, I'm sorry I backed into it, but turned it into your insurance, and it's just a P R nightmare, but I know there's a, I forget what the term is, an insurance for that little plan that'll cover you.
Yeah, if it's, you're talking about if it's our fault.
It's our fault. It's a town employee's fault.
It'll be covered in our property and casualty insurance.
We are covered under that, so we won't have that P R disaster.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Eric's nodding too, good.
I think it's uh collision insurance, is that the coverage you're talking about?
Okay, good. Other commissioners, feel free to...
Did you have another one?
I, I have 50 tabs. I...
Keep going.
Don't get me started on finance.
Yeah, we, we sat down for, I think, a total of 11 hours last week going over the budget, Commissioner Louts and I, so, yeah, we've got some tabs.
And we applaud you for all the work. We do understand how much time and effort went into putting this book together. This was not a, let's do it this week and get it to them. This has been going on for what, four months, five months?
We started pulling together information at the end of November.
Yeah, so six months practically. Go ahead, other commissioners, any questions?
Keep rolling, keep rolling.
Oh, how many people are using the tuition assistance now?
Three.
Three?
Thank you, that's awesome. I was gonna guess.
And we had, okay, and so that's just projecting that we'll have a couple more people potentially take advantage of that program. Okay.
Next one on my little tab here, um, I'm actually on page E1. Not really in the numbers here, this is just kind of a global picture of if Judd Street get, has to be further developed and enhanced because of fire and EMS, and the street improved, the signals improved, et cetera, how can we push that burden more onto the developer or onto the county? If Wakeland Mills were, be developed, Judd Street obviously has to be expanded, has to be increased because of the weight of fire trucks, the movement, the signaling, and a little bit about the coordination and how we pull all that off, because I don't even know which one would happen first.
You're talking about projecting out for...
Judd Street and the signal at Rendell and Judd.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
Yeah, so um you all have a very powerful tool in your development ordinance, specifically in your conditional zoning. So Wakeland Mills coming forward and entering into a conditional agreement with them to make improvements there helps you substantially. Even, even if they don't install the signal, even if they were to agree conditionally to add some lanes in there, that helps a lot. It helps out a lot because you're not only buying down the construction costs, but when you widen lanes, particularly at that intersection, you have to move utilities, which can be very expensive. So anything you can get, anytime you can get the development community to address a problem that you already have through your conditional zoning, that's a win. As far as um tying it to Fire Station One slash EMS, um, you all will have, you have a memorandum of understanding with Wake County right now that takes you through the design process. Your next memorandum of understanding will talk about the construction costs. That's certainly a conversation we can enter into the county about who pays for what. Right now, on the facility itself... Right now on the facility itself, they are paying forty-nine percent of the total cost and we're paying obviously fifty-one percent. That's on the facility itself. We can see what we can get as far as their contribution to that signal since they'll be using it. So I think you've got a couple of opportunities. I think your biggest, most pressing opportunity is going to be conditional zoning attached to Wakeville Mills.
I was just, when we were going through this, we were just trying to figure out who has the burden, what's the time sequence, you know, how much work can be done? If one happens before the other, can a lot of that work be done at the same time, just to save us all time and money?
Yeah, coordination is always, always a benefit if you can do it. Sometimes the timing of things just doesn't work, but there's also things that you can do in advance that doesn't depend upon coordination. Again, if, if you can widen or add lanes at that intersection regardless of when it gets signalized, you've made an improvement to that intersection and brought down the cost significantly.
And when it says enter, we're on the same page and we're looking at the Judd and Arendal signal, that, does that also include the road leading up to it? Because otherwise it looks like it's a one point eight million dollar project just for the signalization or am I, or does that include some of the roadwork as well?
No, that's one point eight for the signal.
Okay.
And I base that based on what you all are paying for the improvement of, or the signalization of Green Pace at Arendal.
Now, is this, I know that NC DOT is not helping us out with the signalization process anymore really financially. We're having to take that all on. But technically, or actually, once that's built out, even though like it would, it would be the fire signal as well as the regular signalization, both of those would be under, would be the responsibility of NC DOT to maintain?
Yeah, so very much like the, the signal at Green Pace and Arendal, once we build it, we turn it over to them to maintain.
Okay.
So any, anytime someone mows down a signal pole or pays the electric bill, that's all on DOT.
Okay, cool.
And a comment here to you, Bobby and Mike, we know you guys are looking at this almost every day and we're really only kind of looking at it a couple of times a year. So we appreciate the attention you put into this detail to keep up with it, including things as simple as the transportation plan extending Judd was very, very wise. Want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead because most of us got the, it's in mine, it's on yours.
Sidewalk cleaning, I'm assuming, this hadn't been done in twenty years. I'm assuming this is something that'll kind of be on a PM schedule.
Because it looks like it's, it's seventy-five every year. Is that like, we're going to be doing it every year or are we doing different portions of sidewalk every year?
Let me let Chris explain the sidewalk cleaning process and then that will, I think, better answer your question.
Yeah, one request we have got is to, sidewalk, like Larry said, over twenty years of gert, grime, bubble gum and stuff like that, it needs a little bit of TLC in cleaning. So what we have done has price from a contractor to come in for all, basically three and a half locks, to come in and pressure wash the sidewalk. A lot of that work potentially has to be done at night because of businesses being open. We'll try, it's went down a little bit with Deddes and Whitley, being, had to do night work, being gone now. But the goal is to come in there and pressure wash that. What you have holding those pavers together is a sand base. And so once you come in and pressure wash that, you're going to wash some of that out. And so what you'll have to do is come back and apply sand, sand's going to get washed out of the grout joints. And so basically you come back with a polymer sand that has a little bit of mortar in it that helps hear that and stay in place. Also in this process, we're going to hire a contractor somewhere, I don't want to mention the name, but actually to put it in, for example, and hopefully we're going to get them to level a lot of those pavers, especially around the tree pits and other areas. Anything that's out of a quarter inch or, or greater elevation change is an ADA issue. And so we hope between the cleaning and some adjustment of pavers, we can make that improvement for sidewalks, look much cleaner, fresher and more inviting. So that's our goal.
And so, Larry, what, what page was that on? Do you remember? Do you have it?
E3, the sidewalk.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sidewalk's on E3.
Yeah, so.
Hold on, I'm sorry. It's on E2.
Okay.
E2.
And so the sidewalk cleaning, it looks like it's.
One time.
Okay, I understand where the confusion is coming from. So commissioners, if you're looking at this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Under the column that says FY twenty-four recommended, that is seventy-five thousand for the downtown sidewalk cleaning. I went ahead and just projected out in FY twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven money knowing that you would spend it on something. It's not that you're going to come back and clean the sidewalks again.
Okay.
But you're going to want to spend, I think, and you'll have a discussion, you'll start a discussion on this at your August mini-retreat, that you're going to want to spend seventy-five thousand somewhere. I don't know if it's like a Gannon, East West Gannon sidewalk or a new sidewalk or something like that. But those were just placeholders that at some point in time you're all going to want to spend money. But it wasn't to do sidewalk, downtown sidewalk cleaning again.
Okay, cool. That, that's kind of how I was reading it, so thank you for that clarification.
Chris.
And so is this similar to how like Knightdale and Wendell, how they addressed theirs as well, doing that tuck pointing along the way?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah. I'm not familiar with what Knightdale and Wendell does, but this is reasonable to expect for those pavers that we need to do some local cleaning and the most effective way is pressure washing. So, sure.
I know we have like a, a schedule of when we, you know, like do improvements to our streets. Would it, would it be viable to have like a schedule for the sidewalks?
Yes, sir. We have tried to do that. We need probably a little more direction from y'all. What's the most important pieces for y'all? We've tried that in the past and we, there's clearly enough sidewalk to be done. We would probably love to hear some suggestions from y'all, what y'all's priority. Because, you know, I, I make lists, Shills made lists, Mike's made lists, Joe's made lists. We're a little bit everywhere and so we really would love some feedback from y'all to tell us what your priorities are. We can prepare a list, that's not a problem. But I do believe having a, like you say, Mayor, something we can chuck off each year and a goal to have a little more detail to what Joe's allocated for each year would be beneficial.
So let me give foreshadowing of your August mini-retreat and some things to be thinking about. We're going to evaluate as a staff, the different sidewalk gaps in the community as well as greenway gaps, things that you all can be doing just because you are out in the community and you are observant. If you see any of your residents like walking alongside a road, make note of that. That's an indication of a gap where we need to have some kind of connection.
Sidewalk comment from working downtown Raleigh for over twenty years. The city of Raleigh tends to hold the restaurants responsible for keeping their sidewalks clean if they allow dining on the sidewalk. So for example, Morning Times, Raleigh Times, plate of nachos goes in the sidewalk practically every day. They come through and pressure wash early in the morning, but it's the restaurant's responsibility. Once we get more food downtown, especially in the alley areas, they are going to get dirty a whole lot quicker. Because you're going to have drinks spilled, food spilled, and I think maybe we need to hold them responsible to keep that clean.
Absolutely. I think that's a good suggestion.
How would that look?
So how, how it could look is you'll get your Main Street Advisory Board, one of the tasks that they have to do is develop a memorandum of understanding. And a example of what could be included in a memorandum of understanding is downtown businesses are responsible for cleaning their sidewalk, power washing their sidewalk, watering the plants. Those are just small examples of things that could be included in a memorandum of understanding.
Thank you.
If you were to power wash and if you were to have the restaurant have to power wash, but that could mess up the foundation again. So how would you handle that?
We'd have, you know, we could really give them some guidance and instruction and if for some reason it is not meeting standards, we'd go back with them to work with them to bring it up to standard.
Okay.
While I got you at the podium, how were you able to operate for almost, I guess, according to my notes here, almost two years with no operations manager?
It's not been easy, sir. It's, it's been a combination of a lot of quality men and ladies putting in a lot of overtime, combining duties, and it's going to be a welcome hire hopefully when we are able to make that. We do, we're in the process of lining up second interviews for a second round for Operations Manager, but, and he will be a great addition. But it's been a struggle. I won't say it's not, but thanks to the guys and women that you employ, they've been able to pull it off. Not easy. And some things are slack, but we tried to keep those where people didn't see them.
Yeah, if we have positions that go vacant more than ninety days, shoot the flare gun. Something's wrong somewhere after ninety days.
What do you mean, like putting down expected hiring dates for new positions? Is that what you're saying?
Well, after, if a position's vacant for ninety days and hasn't been filled, you need to figure out why. It could be the salary, it could be the net, where casting's not big enough. I mean, it can be multiple things.
This one is a little bit more complex than that one. We were in the process of evaluating our organization, introducing a engineer potentially into the department. Some of the roles of the Operations Manager was stormwater driven and so we were trying to balance where that was coming from, with multiple meetings about what duties are being shifted, try to narrow down that job description for that engineer and then rewrite the job description for the Operations Manager as the department was doing. So that took a little bit of time. That is part of the process we went through to get to that goal. We are there now. We are actively in the interviewing process and I can't wait for him or her to show up.
Looking forward to you to bringing them to the meeting and introducing them to us.
I will definitely do that, sir. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have a note on B-19. It is in relationship to the Main Street Coordinator. I'm assuming that when we transition into full Main Street, that's why we are going to need more travel and training expenses and then was the FY, I need to understand the Main Street Coordinator, I'm assuming that that's the, the pay, one, two, three, four, five up. And so for FY twenty-three, it says that the Main Street Coordinator, unless I'm reading this wrong, made sixty-two thousand and that's at twenty hours a week?
No, it's forty hours a week on average.
Okay.
Yeah, that position is a contract position, so there's no benefits or anything above and beyond that. And they made less than that this past year due to the increased workload associated with going into the full Main Street program. That's why it's listed at sixty-two thousand. And then the, you asked about the additional travel and training. As Joe mentioned, that MSP conference, that's Main Street Program Conference, that's the line item that we would utilize for the.
Oh, for the Main Street Board.
For the advisory, for the Main Street Board to attend that conference in addition to a couple other minor things.
Okay.
The travel and training line item up above is primarily associated for economic development, but there's a portion of that that would be dedicated towards Main Street as well.
So the DAC travel and training is in addition to when we are, Main Street travel and training? Do you see an under Main Street Program Coordinator, there's travel and training above and then conference and training below?
Yeah, the, the Main Street Conference is specifically for attendance at that Main Street Conference for that board.
Okay.
The one above that is specifically for Main Street Coordinator.
So the one that says a downtown associate program?
Yeah, that should be.
This is why I'm, okay. I was a little bit confused why we were using.
I apologize for the title of that.
Okay.
It should be Main Street Program Travel and Training and that's specifically for the coordinator because there are required meetings that they have to attend throughout the state.
So with that said, we plan for the training, but it's fixed to that person's contract so they can leave at any time. So is that beneficial to us as a municipality or am I misunderstanding that? They're going to take that training with them, so they're not obligated to as a full-time employee.
Well, anybody can leave at any point, but.
I completely understand that. I'm still trying to understand the rationale of not having this money for, to, we keep saying less, less benefits. I want to understand what is that, will we have to keep it contract and not make it a full-time position?
I think it has to do with at some point we're going to ask the Main Street Board to take on some of that cost. Is that correct?
Well, we, we want, one of the things we want the executive board to put together for us is an operating budget. You know, what type of money are they looking for from the town? Do they think the MSD Municipal Service District is a way to go to tax to get additional funds? And then the events, believe it or not, properly done should make money. I know everybody looks at me kind of wide-eyed when I say that, but a properly run downtown event with vendors and the fees you charge, you can actually make money.
Well, one of the things that I was really impressed by was the number of communities when we went to the conference that said that their executive board, their program pays for the coordinator as well as.
They become a self-sufficient nonprofit.
Correct, correct. And so I'm, I'm assuming that that's why we're keeping them under contract, right? Or.
Long, long-term, that's, that's the goal is to be able to convert a lot of these costs over to the, the program. As the program gets up and running, we need somebody with a very wide range of knowledge when it comes to both municipal government as well as the Main Street Program. And right now as a contract employee, it's a lot more cost efficient to do that as opposed to try to hire somebody full-time because that salary would be substantially more than the sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, and so like, I guess it would be easier if we needed to, to transition to a different coordinator if the program outpaces what their capabilities are. Is that what I'm understanding? Yeah.
How so? Would it be easier?
You cancel a contract.
There's.
You get rid of a contract employee very easily.
Have anybody here read the contract before that we have? You guys said it's easy. You guys make assumptions off the basis.
I've not seen, not seen the contract.
I'd like to understand a little bit more.
So I think that the next question from someone's going to be, can we see the contract?
We're making assumptions to be easier. We don't know, if you haven't read it, we're not that informed.
All right.
So we can get a copy of that contract?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Because you guys.
All right, Larry, you going to pick back up?
Go ahead.
Is there any or economic development while I'm up here?
Yeah, let me take a look real quick.
I don't have anything else.
I don't, I don't think that I do either. I'm not sure anybody else.
Thank you.
May I first request that we take another break or a break, but before that, could I make a request that when, when we see all of these under the requested capital improvements, these are awesome, but there's a lot of flipping back and forth. I would rather see the ones that were, that, that we decided were going to be recommended in the recommended area and then just put the rest of them under like the requested but not recommended.
That, that.
It just saves a lot of flipping back and forth and trying to understand was that recommended or, or was that just requested and not recommended? That would be very, very helpful. That would be very, very helpful.
Five-minute recess?
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Baxter?
I agree we should reconvene.
Follow-up after the.
No, 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 that, that was the, the request about having the capital improvement requests, what was requested and what was recommended, kind of separated out. Thank you, Mayor.
Page B4. Guess I'll direct this in towards Bobby. Interest earnings on the Powell bill money. B2, it was 1,600, nothing in 2023, and now estimated all the way up to $35,000.
Uh, that's, you're talking about for 23. Yeah, we, we don't typically budget the revenue on the Powell bill, because it's usually pretty immaterial. This year, with interest rates going up, that's about what we're projecting for this year, but typically we don't budget anything for it. Whatever interest earnings that are attributed to that money is just rolls back into the Powell bill program. We report annually. So essentially, it just rolls back into future Powell bill dollars.
And then the line right above that, can you explain the cell tower lease, where we have money and then there's no money in future years?
With the implication, implementation of GASB-87 with leases, as far as leases we pay for copiers, vehicles, things like that, this is a new GASB implementation.
Tell them what GASB means.
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
I can't hear you, I'm so sorry.
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay.
They implement new statements a lot. Just when everybody gets used to one, or a group of one.
They change them, right.
They add a new, you know, add a new set to just create more work for us. So what that is, was brand-new last year, but it's just amortizing the interest on, this is a cell tower lease, like we have antennas on our water towers, where we get rent, rental revenue. So that's what that is, that's why that's brand-new last year.
Yeah, just the way you're reporting it out now, on the new standards, okay?
Right.
Another question on cemetery lots or cemetery fees. Is the cemetery basically sold out now?
For the most part, yes, there are some.
Standing room only?
There are some available, but the ones that are, are pretty much only going to be used for cremations. I say that because they either have a huge tree sitting on a good chunk of them, making it not very usable for a vault burial. But you, well, you may recall, a couple of years ago, we changed the ordinance to allow for two cremated remains per plot. Well, really, that would be, if you buy a pair, that would be four cremated remains could be on a plot. But the answer to your question is pretty much full, except for that. Because, I mean, if you've been out there, you see there's a lot of huge trees and expansive roots going out, which makes it not really possible to put a vault in there anymore in some of those spots.
And the trend lately is for towns to get out of the cemetery business, is it not?
I haven't heard that, but I would like to.
So quick question, with that, on that note, where can a citizen find information about that process if they were interested in those vaults or whatever, your cremation spots? Where can you find information on that?
Uh, I can check on B.
Is there anything online that we have where citizens can find that out?
Uh, I think my phone number's on there. Does that mean, or like the details of it?
Details of it?
Uh, I don't think there's anything on the website like that.
Okay.
But just if you have questions, it's got my number on there.
Thank you.
And then looking at the competition, the other cemetery in town is probably, what, 80% filled up?
Yeah, I don't know.
They're about to expand that one.
Yes.
They have a span, they have worked in progress to expand it. They're about to expand it a big time now.
I'm just wondering if there's a need for, it's a strange economic development tool, but.
Oh, boy.
A potential new cemetery. If somebody wants to buy some land and.
I think towns are getting away from that, though. I don't think it's something that a town should invest in, because it has been in the past, a lot of for the town.
And right now, I mean, it's never, the revenue we've ever gotten has never covered costs of maintenance out there, so it's not a money-making business. I remember the former mayor used to always say, it's not a money-making thing, it's more of a service that town provides, but it's definitely not money-making at the rates we've always charged. But it was very popular because it was cost-effective.
I'm just projecting down the road, sooner or later, there'll be no place to be buried in town. So potentially, you have to be buried in Raleigh or some other large cemetery. So just something to think about why, quote, "land prices are on the low side." And as I said, that could be an economic development tool for some investor to consider doing another private cemetery in the area. Commissioner Baxter, do you have any other ones? We're going through, a lot of, a lot of this stuff's actually been explained.
Yeah, I'm looking.
One budget item, actually from the past, is we had a bunch of donations we recognized at a meeting a couple of months ago, like $11,000. Were we ever able to get some information together about what those sources were? We're just kind of, it's one of the things we're kind of interested in. Where is, where are these donations coming from?
I thought I had provided that information. I know I sent out an email, obviously I did not send that out to the group, but I've sent that out, it'll be no problem to resend that out to the group.
Yeah, I just remember seeing the one that had the different tiers.
That was, that was sponsorships.
Yeah, that's the only one that I remember seeing.
Yeah, the, the email that I sent out, it talked about where the money came from. There was a question about where the money goes to, so it sounds, I just need to resend it.
On that, on that note, I think also, we need to discuss amongst ourselves a policy of how those funds we handle. In full disclosure, I was getting hit with a lot of citizens saying, okay, how were we able to spend money that we didn't have before it was allocated, before we accepted the funds? I was given some, I was given an answer, but it still does well with the citizens that kind of came to me with that. So we're trying to figure out, we need a policy in place, how those funds we handle somewhat, and when will they be spent? Because we're seeing products, stuff that we already contracted, obligated to the sponsors, they were already receiving stuff that we hadn't even approved yet. So there were questions in that aspect of things. So somebody needs to be policy, how those funds we receive, when and when will be, that money can be allocated or spent out. Can you elaborate on for me a little bit, Bobby, how we handle that? The $11,000? Because like I said, citizens were saying that we spent money that we hadn't received yet, but.
So somebody wrote a check, but the board hadn't acknowledged, accepted it. Yeah, I've, I've had, I've had that come to me as well.
So I just want to understand the process, so I can elaborate to many citizens and ask that question.
Uh, I don't recall the timing of, I think the donations were, the sponsorships were received and appropriated before they were spent, probably, right? They were for which events? I'm not sure right offhand.
Yeah, so it was for our spring events, and we discussed this as we brought forward that budget reallocation. So we, this was a process that has been long utilized in our organization, and so we did not know it was an issue operationally to handle it that way, and now we know you don't want to handle it that way, and that you would like to do it different. So we're happy to do that. I mean, essentially, what would have happened is we would have canceled, we, we would have canceled events or canceled components of an event, or not moved forward with certain things if it didn't get funded. That's, that's the reality of how that would have worked, but that would have been the reality in the past as well.
So to Commissioner Miles's point, that is a question to the board. We can, we can certainly answer questions, specific questions about how the flow of money works, how a donation is made, when is it actually spent, how does designation of funds figure or not factor into that? So we can certainly answer questions like that. To Commissioner Miles's point, though, if the board is interested in policy, again, I do this just from a capacity standpoint, I'd like to get some interest from, if there's majority interest from the board, and what are some things, other than the things that were pointed out, that you'd be interested in knowing about? You don't need to give me that now, but that's just.
I asked the board, why we're in the process of thinking like this, because what I was hit with as well was that, okay, what, what one organization that we don't own those funds from starts soliciting, our parking wreck department or sponsorship, how do we handle that? I don't know if we have policy in place to say, no, 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 we don't want your funds, you know, so we're fine without, if a certain organization came along that we didn't want to associate with the town or Xavier. How would, how would we handle that? I mean, it's just something, as we change and change in times, it's something we potentially have to address.
I think part of that question could be directed to Eric. Is there, are there consequences potentially if we've accepted funds from one organization and we choose not to accept funds from another organization, meaning that their funds won't, or their organization name won't be on our T-shirts or whatever, because we haven't accepted funds from them?
The general rule, in any kind of local government, is nondiscrimination is the general rule. But when it comes to accepting funds from different organizations, I think it's more of a public relations issue than it is a legal issue. There's nothing that says that any municipality has to accept funds from any organization. So if you accept it, and it advances a public purpose, and it's clear to the board that that's what it does, and that's how you want to apply it, then fine. I think there may be some accounting and reporting issues related to gifts and other donations to the town. Is that, am I all wet on that, Bobby, or?
No.
Whether there's sometimes, when you get grants and things, you have to account for it in a special way?
Yeah, I mean, just when you, when you receive those donations, sponsorship, grants, et cetera, you need to appropriate them before, you know, before spending them.
So we did do it correct this time, is that what I'm taking? Because what I had, some of the citizens say they were seeing flyers and advertisements on the street, prior to us accepting those funds, or am I missing the timeline? That's what I mean. Because the email I received, I think most funds came in around March timeframe, early March, April, summer timeframe, but we hadn't received those funds, we as a board yet. But the advertisement and stuff, and T-shirts, and stuff on the roads, had already been printed, and going forward. Had we denied those funds, I mean, as the park director just said, we would probably just would have changed everything, but that money was already spent, so we can't go back and get money that we haven't, we've already spent. I mean, I'm just trying to get a conclusion.
Yeah.
So the other question is, how often would something like that actually happen?
What's that for, as sponsorship?
Where we would, we would decline funds being given to the town for a legitimate public purpose.
Right now, if you had a hate group come along, where the timeframe that we're in now, you had a hate group or something come along with one of that sponsorship, five thousand dollars, we're going to walk them out with staff, in the back of those shirts, on the side of the road, at every concert, spring concert we go to, I mean, it's just timeframe that we're in, it's something we need to take a look at, I feel, but just to have those policies in place, because we're opening that door.
Can we put this in our August work session to talk about?
Absolutely.
So that we're not.
I like that, stand off chat, I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely a conversation to be had, especially when you look at getting sponsorships, like you said, from groups with backgrounds that we may not want to be affiliated with. So I think that is, it's a good conversation to have.
We got the direction we need, thank you.
And hopefully, in the future, we will have a human relations committee, or someone that could have dialogue about situations like this. Give some more insight.
I'm hoping that our communications manager would be able to do that.
Dead on that.
Is that in the job schedule?
Put that on, and dead on that, too.
There you go.
Other duties that you sign.
Yeah.
So on E5, I'm assuming that the IT network reinvestment, are we just, you know, every year it has thirty thousand dollars out to FY 2030? Is that just like the replacement of X number of computers, and X, we're anticipating that things are going to be breaking and need replacing?
Terminals for the fire trucks.
Terminals for the fire trucks? Okay, okay.
Yeah, another note I scribbled here for fire. Fire budget was very straightforward and well-done. Question we had is, how many feet of fire hose are you going to surplus? Because Commissioner Baxter and I were talking about, there are a lot of craft people who like to get a hold of used fire hose, because they can make things out of them, and then we even said, they could be cut into pieces and given away to kids as a Zebulon swag, or even a recruiting tool, because used fire hose is hard to come by, really.
Right. We don't keep a lot of spare hose, and when I say that, fire hose is tested every year, so it has to pass that test. If it doesn't, we don't throw the hose away, we do keep it, because I know you've probably seen the flags that people have made with fire hose, and so the bigger fire hose, the five-inch fire hose we have, sometimes people that have lake places, they want to use it at their boat dock, and so we keep all that hose until somebody comes along and says, hey, have you got any fire hose that we might could get, that didn't pass the test? And so we, we do keep it, we don't keep a lot of it, but we do keep it, just in case someone does want some used fire hose.
Okay.
Chief Perry owes you.
On E8, do we know, underneath the community and economic development vibrant downtown, there is thirty thousand dollars for the downtown plan? And I was, I was assuming that that was for the inventory, but is it not, is it more extensive than just the inventory? Because I also was told that we already had an inventory. This is more of what the, the executive board is going to be utilizing?
The downtown plan is actually a sub-area plan that works correspond with our comprehensive lane use plan.
Okay.
It's a deep dive look that goes into everything from details for street furniture, what usage should be going into what buildings, what traffic calming measures, whereas a comprehensive lane use plan is kind of a, a general look, this goes deep dive into the specific needs of a small geographic region.
So this is going to be studying what areas the, like the bulb outs and stuff would work well, and, okay. And so we're going to contract that out, then? There's like a, okay.
Yeah, and our Main Street, our Main Street board will essentially be the, the primary focus committee that help oversee that project.
Okay, and so is this something that we need to shop out for ourselves? I know that a lot of other towns probably do this as well, but is there, has there been a successful contractor that the Main Street program communities tend to use that you might look at, or is it just kind of find somebody to do this?
We're going to put out an RFQ, but we're going to specifically send it to a list that's based on what other municipalities have used successfully in the past, as an effort to try to lure them, but it does have to go through either an RFQ or an RFP process.
Okay, and my other question with this was, do we know if some of our neighboring towns have done their downtown plans?
Not the immediate downtowns, but I can tell you that Apex did one, and that was, you probably already remember seeing parts of that, when we made the trip over there. Holly Springs has prepared one. Fuquay prepared one just recently. Theirs was pretty substantial, because it was two parts, it wasn't just the one downtown, it was both areas.
Okay.
So it's something that we do have recent numbers on, as well as in speaking with a consultant that we hired in the very early stages of the DAC program, which kind of got the focus groups kind of kicked off.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Well, we're on F10, and you really don't have to go there. This is eighteen thousand dollars for a drone, and I'd expressed some interest in this a couple of years ago. A drone can be used for all kinds of things, between looking at traffic at six o'clock in the morning in an intersection, planning can use it to demonstration here for us, when we're looking at a piece of property, so you can actually see it moving picture, than just a photograph, and the police fire uses are just untold. It's, it's a great tool, if we can free the money up, I think it's something we should consider.
I agree, we talked about it for quite some time, and I think that if we can, if we can, I would like to see it in there, just because I think that there are so many uses, even if it's not an eighteen thousand dollar drone, there are ones that don't require FAA licensing, smaller-sized drones, that, so at least we have some type of drone on hand, and we could maybe look at a more expensive drone in the future. I see the chief coming up, she's got some thoughts.
She probably needs to elaborate, because my question is, what do we currently use them for? I mean, we have some.
So I just want to, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I just want to offer that we do have two drones, we have one mid-sized and one mini, we have two pilots within the police department, and certainly are able to cooperate with the other departments and share those assets. We've not had to use one on an incident yet, but our pilots do a lot of training, a lot for, every month, they do a lot of training.
If they're going to train, I'd love to see some traffic drone footage, especially during peak hours. You know, I've, I've driven out and been in it, but it would be nice to see from the air.
Yeah, if they're going to be doing training, that would be awesome. So then, what is, would this be a larger-size drone that was in the requested budget?
Yeah, so we wanted to have an opportunity to have a fleet, because they're used for different things. I'll give a little bit of information from a debrief that I got on the Headingham shooting. They had, they had multiple drones out there from different departments, and ended up using a quite small drone that went into the area where the shooter was. So you need different, different pieces of technology for different operations, and this was a more advanced system. I think we're absolutely going to get to the point of needing and growing our drone program, but in terms of priorities, I wouldn't put it in here if I didn't think we needed it, but in terms of priorities, it's not one of the top.
I would like to see this higher priority maybe next year, so that we could look at taking that step to get a higher-powered drone available to us. Thank you so much.
Question, with the different types of drones, does it require different types of certifications, or operations?
I'm not really sure of that. I know that the license that our operators have right now are able to serve a variety of them, but there, there may be like more commercial types of drones that they're not licensed for, I don't know the answer for sure.
Yeah, the question came up with, with Peg Media, when we was talking about that thing that Wendell did, and I was talking with the young lady from Peg Media, and they have to be certified on certain drones to be able to even do what they did for that video.
Yeah, you got to have FAA licensing over a certain size.
So.
We don't have infrared capability yet, do we? Just visual only?
Yeah.
Night vision at all, or not?
I don't think so. I'll double-check, but I don't think so.
Probably not.
I was trying, I was thinking back to, I knew, I knew we used infrared technology recently, not recently, in the last, maybe sixteen months or so, on a case, so I was trying to pull out, where did we get that from, but we borrowed it from the fire department, and it wasn't aerial, it was just.
Well, I got you there, chief, yes, a quick question, totally, something I believe, the McGruff costume, what, I mean, the little outfit, that was a big hit for the kids. I talked to some of the staff there, and we currently borrow it from, like, Nightdale. Just kind of curious, what is our, what is our outlook on that? I know it's not high priority, but just kind of curious, what do you know about it?
So, we knew that Nightdale had one, because I worked there before. It's used like once a year in Nightdale, so for us to borrow it five, six, ten times is not a big deal.
Okay, got you.
I think if we got to a point where we were abusing their resource that was needed, we would want to go get our own, but we're not in that position right now.
That's me talking, not the staff, this is me talking, thank you.
Larry, did you want to speak to F18?
This was the twenty thousand dollars for additional pole lighting at Christmas time, and Commissioner Baxter and I were talking about, we love the idea of banners across the road for holidays, you know, Zebulon wishes you Merry Christmas. I know DOT has some restrictions, not sure we can go across Gannon or Arendal, but it just looks very Hallmark-ish, very neat, as opposed to just a LED light hanging on a pole.
Did we used to have them that went across, seems like years ago, years ago we had that?
Years ago, there was one that went across, or.
Arendal, yes, yeah.
And can I make one budget as a whole request? There are times that the departmental priority will say level A, B, or C, and then there are other times when it says high, medium, or low. Could we just get that all on the same page, so that we're using one way to describe what the priority is? Thank you.
And we are recycling, or reusing some of our old Christmas decorations.
Yeah, I think useful life is like twenty years on some of those decorations, so we do reuse them, and, you know, rehang them every year.
When we buy new ones, do we keep the old ones, I guess? That's my question.
They use them till they wear out.
Use them till they, till they can't find parts for them anymore.
Christmas lights, we basically, they do have a long useful life, like Mr. Lutz said. Recently, we changed from the traditional lighting to an LED lighting. We do believe we'll be able to get, you know, the fifteen to twenty years out of those, because they're literally used once a year. Our idea was to extend those figurine-type things across the street, across Arendal Avenue and stuff, so the cost you see there for those is about four hundred dollars for a pole, for electrical to be hooked up, and about four hundred dollars to purchase the light, so, because our idea of being able to get across there. So we can do that, banners, it was just an idea to try to get something a little more festive. We are hearing, people say, hey, we'd like to see it extended farther down Gannon, we'd like to see it extended farther north of town, since we're expanding that way, so it was a way to try to address some concerns we've heard, so we're open to do anything this board wants to do in that regard.
I really like having the pole lights, I know that for my children's entire lives, we have all been excited to find out what is going to be hanging on our pole at Christmas time. One thought or suggestion about lights, and maybe this is something that you might be able to find a fix for, the, the blue lights are still that high Kelvin that are attached to like the stars, and I think that the reindeer noses, and it just makes it difficult to see from far away, it would be better to use the lower Kelvin lights, if you could find them, and it, I don't think it would be switching out very many of the bulbs.
Look at that, see, it's the blue and the red on Rudolph.
These are the important budget things that I'm talking about, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris. But I'll forget about it later, so you got to save that. I think my last question was on F60, oh, darn it, Chris, sorry.
Six?
Yeah, F60.
Sixty.
It's the, it's the light tower. And I'm assuming that we own some now, right?
Yes, ma'am, we own two, we own a nineteen ninety-eight version, and we bought, we purchased one last year, twenty twenty-two, so this will be added to our fleet, a lot of our events, our goal is to work toward about four, a lot of our events, smaller events, take a, you know, from two to four, and this would help us eliminate that, it also gives us some functionality to, we resource them out to fireworks, emergencies, we resource them out to police and fires, so they don't just go for special events, they are used here around, so it just, it adds to our inventory and ability to not have to rent.
Right, and that's just for one tower, because otherwise, we were renting them? Is that what it was? Is that what it was?
We have rented as many as nine to 10, or borrowed that many, rented or combination rented by for events we've done on the cycle from Wake County Emergency Management, other Navy and communities, or we've had to rent it there for, or not available, so just trying to have a little more control of our destiny when we do events.
Yeah, 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 so this will bring us up to three then? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like that's all I had.
That actually was the last one on my list, too.
Oh, okay, all right.
Any more questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Lox? Harrison? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Miles?
Not on my behalf, sir.
Commissioner Baxter?
Probably, but I don't have anything right in front of me right now, so, no, it's good.
Commissioner Moore? You have any?
Nothing more to add.
We certainly appreciate the staff's effort in explaining some of these delicate issues in the budget, and I'm sure we will have questions at the next one, so, but thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion to
Second, second, second.
Second by Commissioner
We wait for you now, Commissioner Harrison.
All in favor? Leading adjourn.